All right. Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, October 8th. And at this time, I'm calling to order the Westwood School Committee meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to do a roll call for attendance. We could start with Maya Plodkin.
Here.
Toni Mullen.
Here.
Amanda Phillips.
Here.
And Charlie Donahue. Charlie? We know you're there. Can you tell if he's still muted?
Yes, he's still muted.
Okay. I'm going to continue on. We see him, so we'll accept that he's here. And I'm Carol Lewis. And welcome, everybody. At this point, I'm going to recognize the live stream that we have, which is provided in real time. We have public access to the activities of the school committee made available online at westwood.k12.ma.us/live, in accordance with the March 12, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. At this point in our meeting, we are going to adjourn to executive session. The purpose of this executive session is to conduct strategy with respect to both collective bargaining and potential litigation, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the school committee if these discussions were held in open session. So the committee will, in fact, return to open session after we adjourn to executive session. So can I get a roll call vote to enter into executive session, starting with you, Toni?
Yay, yes.
Okay, Maya?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Charlie?
Still muted.
Still muted, okay. But I am here as well. We know Charlie's here. We are going to move now to executive session. Thank you, Connor. Executive session, I'd like to call this the public meeting to order, beginning with roll call, starting with Charlie Donahue.
Here.
Maya Plodkin?
Here.
Toni Mullen?
Here.
Amanda Phillips?
Here.
Okay, we're all here. And we're going to get started with the... So again, today is Thursday, October 8th, and I'm just going to reiterate the fact that we... This is a lot... This meeting is livestreamed, to provide real-time public access to the activities of the school committee. Access is available online in accordance with the March 12th Executive Order of Governor Baker. So we're back, and we're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Hi, everyone. Good evening. First, I want to take a minute to welcome Lincoln Lynch to the meeting. So Lincoln is serving as our Acting Director of Business and Finance while Lemma is out on leave. Welcome to you.
Hi, folks.
We are thrilled to have him joining us. So Lincoln is a very experienced school administrator. He served as the superintendent in the Walthall Public Schools for 12 years.
12 years.
12 years. And prior to that was a school business administrator for 20 years. So brings a nice perspective and a lot of expertise to this role, and we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Nice to be here. Thank you.
So I'm going to start the superintendent's report tonight with a budget update, an update to some of the things that we talked about at the last school committee meeting, and Lemma provided a memo to you about this that's in your packet. But basically, what I want to report is that our financial picture for FY '21 is stronger than what we talked about last month. So this is in the good news category. Last month, we had been sort of projecting what we thought were potential risks and liabilities for FY '21. And at that time, we were saying that we thought, you know, potentially, we could have a somewhat significant shortfall for FY '21. One of the things that we talked a lot about was circuit breaker and uncertainty there. And what we have realized is that there still is uncertainty in circuit breaker. But we believe that that uncertainty, while it may impact FY '22, that we're actually okay for FY '21. And I should say that we really want to thank our partners on the town side. They were enormously helpful in helping us to close out the FY '20 budget with all of those unanticipated COVID-related expenses. And you recall, we had things with revolving accounts with paying our food service employees and extended day employees. You recall that conversation. They were very helpful in applying some funds that the town had related to the CARES Act and helping us out there. And the result of that was that we were able to close out FY '20 and retain some of our circuit breaker funds in our circuit breaker account. We didn't have to apply as big an offset out of that account to our budget, what we had budgeted. And therefore, we still have that funding available now to apply to this year's offset. So specifically, she outlined for you here that whereas we had budgeted to use $743,000 as a circuit breaker offset in FY '20, we actually used $474,000. And so that difference between the budgeted offset and what was actually applied remains in our circuit breaker account and can be applied this year. And so we began this year with about $776,000 in the circuit breaker account, and we budgeted $779,000 offset. So we could use all of the money that's currently in that account and apply it to the offset. So we can cover our FY '21 needs. What we are waiting to find out is what the circuit breaker reimbursement will be on things that we have submitted for. And that, of course, could then impact how much revenue we have to apply towards FY '22. So we'll be keeping a close eye on that situation. And Lemma provided a little history of the circuit breaker account for you there, just to provide a frame of reference. The other piece of very good news is that we had a discussion with Pam Dukeman last week, and we confirmed that the town is able to apply some of its CARES funding to pay for some of our technology purchases that we made to be ready for this year. So as you recall, in the summer, we determined we needed iPads for pre-K and grade one, and iPads and some Apple pens for teachers. That was about $220,000. And the town is going to be able to cover that expense out of their CARES funding. So that is fantastic news, and we appreciate that support quite a bit. And in that conversation with Pam, the town is also going to be working with the schools to pursue additional FEMA funding for reimbursable expenses like PPE. And it's going to support us in charging some of our reimbursable expenses to that FEMA account as well. So that is all good news in terms of our financial picture. Lemma also just included in her memo a couple of things that we didn't talk about last month, but I just wanted to bring to your attention. So you'll recall that this is year four of our four-year phase out of the kindergarten fee. And similarly, in closing out FY '20, we didn't have to use all of our budget offset from the kindergarten account. So the kindergarten account has additional funds above and beyond the 85K that we need for the offset this year. And so that's a nice reserve to have. And we also had not discussed last month that we also have $425,000 in our school-held special education transfer account. We really didn't talk about those in the context of assessing the risk last month because those funds are things that we anticipate we may need to deal with contracted services in special ed and potentially some of our compensatory services in special ed. So we had already kind of earmarked those in that direction, tentatively. So that is... Those are the highlights. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And again, thank folks on the town side because they've really been working with us in a very collaborative way around the budget. We appreciate that.
That's all good news. We need good news in these times.
We do.
And considering the fact that we have so many... Well, it appears we could have so many unanticipated issues.
Yes. And I think, Toni, last month, you had asked if we could sort of each month update you on additional COVID expenses. I did check in with Lemma about that, and she said that we haven't really had any significant expenses hit the budget in the intervening couple of weeks. But we obviously are tracking very carefully those expenses, and we'll plan to update you next month.
Okay. And we have... I think we have it later on the agenda. I'll leave my questions and discussion to later on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll talk about the quarter one report later. Okay.
I find it crazy that it's already been four years, right, Toni?
I know. I was thinking that. I was like, geez, that was like...
I thought we just did it last year.
Oh.
But okay.
Um, all right. Okay, so I will move on. The other item under the superintendent's report is COVID updates and some current data that we want to share with you. So I want to talk about some COVID updates in terms of operations. And then Allison's just going to say a word or two about teaching and learning, and then Abby's going to talk about some health issues. So operationally, we have been assessing our bus ridership. The community was fantastic in heeding our call to refrain from registering for the bus if people thought that they could come up with alternate transportation. Things have kind of settled in, and we actually do have additional capacity on almost all of our buses. The amount of sort of space on the bus varies quite a bit, depending on the route. But we have put that together, and so we are planning to reopen bus registration and see if there are any families who would like to now get a seat on one of our yellow buses. So just giving folks a heads up on that. That should be coming out soon. The other piece of good news is that the federal government, through the USDA, has provided grant funding to school districts to provide free lunch to all students through the end of December, or when the money runs out, if it's before the end of December. So this is a very nice support in this time of the pandemic. And so we will be sending something to families tomorrow, letting them know that this is a resource that's available. And what this means is that for our lunch program, you recall that this year, we have elementary students eating at school, and we have a menu. There are a couple of options each day. And it's a, like a boxed lunch that our food service prepares and then delivers at lunchtime. And then at the middle school and high school, we have that same boxed lunch option as a takeaway option. So the menu and the options will remain the same. The ordering system remains the same. But if you go into the online portal and order your boxed lunch, you will see that the price is zero. And so this is, you know, a wonderful potential benefit. We want to bring it to folks' attentions. No such thing as a free lunch.
I was just going to say that.
Until December 31st. So we hope people will take advantage of it, and our food service department is, you know, ready to serve. And for our students who are fully remote, the way we're going to handle this is that we are offering, again, free until December 31st, a weekly meal kit. So they can pick it up, and the letter will outline locations and times. And you can basically come get your meal kit for a week of lunches and take them home. So I hope people will be on the lookout for that information.
And this covers... This will cover like overhead, like our, I don't know, you know, Michael, you know, like the...
Yes, actually. Truthfully, because we will be reimbursed for this, this could be very good for us operationally because we think that it might increase the volume of lunch that we're serving. So it's a win-win.
So there's money in the budget, room on the bus and a free lunch? Is that what you're saying?
It's all good news, Maya.
Wow. Let's just end the meeting right now.
We're strange from talking about power outages and, you know, other challenges. This is the good news part of the meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great. Um, okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Allison for a minute to talk about teaching and learning as we switch to this new model.
Right. And I just want to give fair warning that I'm getting these weird, your internet connection is unstable messages. So if things go a little wonky, I will, you know, mute myself temporarily, try grabbing my laptop and running downstairs and see if that works.
Okay.
So on the teaching and learning front, we're seeing some really great things happening. And I want to just take a pause to give a particular shout out to our technology department. They are really the heroes of the hybrid model. They're working kind of all the time to try and help support people in making this model as robust as it possibly can be. And in addition, I'd say teachers throughout the district are really approaching some of the challenges of teaching during this time with remarkable energy and creativity. So broadly speaking, I'd say things are going very well, and I'm hearing particularly good things at the secondary level. The biggest challenges, as we noted last time, are in the younger grades, particularly in grades two and three. In the K-1, we have kids back four days a week, and that's sort of ticking along just great. But our youngest kids who are in that Monday, Thursday cohort are really very young to be sort of toggling back and forth. So the last... Starting last week, we've really been looking very carefully at kind of what are the needs in that space and how do we support folks? The principals, coordinators, district leadership team engaged in learning walks throughout the district in grade two and three classrooms at all the schools. And then some of us even spent full days. I got to spend a full day with grade three last week and a full day with grade two this week. So we could see the arc of a student's experience from morning arrival and morning meeting all the way to dismissal at the end of the day. One takeaway from that investigation is that the challenges really do look different in different classrooms. And that's really about... It's about a lot of things, but primarily, it's about the composition of how many kids are in the hybrid, how many kids are fully remote, what's the range of learning needs in the classroom, what's the size of the class. And we've really realized that a one-size-fits-all approach won't work to provide kind of targeted support in these grades. But we have started taking steps to try and offer some more supports for grades two and three. We did a special PD session that was not part of our regular plan for grade two and three teachers yesterday. And we're looking at how to match some additional supports. Some things we're considering include some more robust online curriculum support as well as some additional staffing support, especially thinking about the fully remote kids in grade three and also about all of the kids in grades two and three on the days that they're outside of school. That seems to be the biggest concern that teachers have. The kids that are in front of them, they're like, we feel good about what we're doing there, even though it looks and feels pretty different. Also, I just want to say unsurprisingly, we see that the teachers have been collaborating, kind of figuring things out as they go. So the initial concerns that we heard, you know, a week or two ago, some of those are starting to abate. People are kind of figuring out how to make things work as we go. And I'm really... I've been super impressed. I mean, I think we're trying to do something ambitious, and the teachers are sort of rising to the challenge across the board. And, you know, I think there are things about this that are just different from typical school. Folks are doing everything they possibly can to make it as close to school as it can be. That's my quick snapshot. Happy to answer questions if you've got them.
Thanks, Allison. Anyone have any questions?
I just have one comment, and this is really goes to the tech piece. And I honestly don't think... I don't know how we can fix this. But one of the things I've noticed is that, you know, when you're working, particularly on Wednesdays, a lot of times you'll get bounced off of a Zoom call. A student will get bounced out. And because we require the waiting room, the student will then try to get back in, but the teacher won't notice, right? Either the teacher's in a breakout room and doesn't see the student trying to get back in, or, you know, you assume everybody's there, so you're not looking for that little alert. And so I think then kids start texting their friends to say, can you please tell so-and-so to let me in the room? And I don't know how we can fix that problem, but I think it is occurring. So maybe it's just something we can think about because I think that a lot of times the kids get very frantic that they can't get back in the class. And so, like I said, I know it's a function of Zoom, but it's just something maybe we can make the teachers aware to keep looking or something.
Yeah, we actually are working on that. We know that that's an issue, and we think there is a way to fix that. So, you know, one of the things that we were sort of working our way through with Zoom is getting that authenticated user feature in place, which we do have in place now at secondary. And so they don't... They actually don't need the waiting room now because you can't get in to the call unless you're logged in from your Westwood account. So that's good. The... What we're working through is that, like, our second graders don't have email addresses. And so we've... We're working... And if Steve were here, he could be more articulate about it, that he is working his way through that issue. And we think basically we do have to somehow make them official Westwood users. And if we could get that authentication feature up and running, then we wouldn't need the waiting room for them either. I think what Steve would say right now, just because we did have a couple of Zoom bombing incidents, you know, we really don't want that to happen with the young kids. So we're being super cautious about the security. But yeah, thank you for saying, bringing that up. We know that that's an issue because you're right. The teacher's attention is divided, right? They don't notice.
So it is in place for the middle school?
Um, yeah. Well, Steve must be watching because he's texting me. So he's saying... He says, he said to me, we could disable the waiting room now that we authenticate. I actually thought we'd already done that, so I will tell him tomorrow. Yes, do that, Steve.
Okay, great. All right. Because I think in the middle school, it was, I know, well, across the grades, but, you know, this... If, to the extent we can do it now, I think that would be helpful for the kids.
Yes, I think we'll do that. I think we were feeling a little nervous after a couple of incidents, and so we were super cautious, but we should be able to disable the waiting room.
Okay.
Allison, I have a question. Thank you for the work you're doing relative to going out and seeing what's going on. And it's really a unique opportunity. As difficult as it is to see, are there new ideas, new innovations? Have we found things that someone, teacher, has figured out something to do? And can we... How can we share that and get those innovative, creative things that we're finding and spread it? And secondly, is there any effort being made statewide to try to find innovative things being done in second and third grade, you know, that could be shared? You know, because there's a huge opportunity here. And as you said, the kids are very different, and... But, you know, there may be some wonderful things we can learn if we're stuck in this for a while by sharing that because the teachers are so innovative. They figured out a way to do it with this kind of kid or that kind of kid. So are we recording this and making it available widely to help others learn? And is this something we can be doing with other school systems?
Thank you. That's a great question. And I'd say part of the PD that we put together was to give teachers a chance to sort of cross-pollinate. And they are coming up with kind of creative things, and some of them are more complicated. Some of them are really simple. We had a teacher who figured out, she brought in like an old lazy Susan that she had at home, so she could put her laptop on it and swivel it so that the kids at home could like track the progress of what was going in the class. It's such a small, simple thing. But when teachers are able to share ideas like that with each other, it really does help them kind of break through one challenge or another. So we've been spending a lot of our PD time with grade-level teams working across the district to try and encourage that sort of sharing of ideas. In terms of outside the district, we actually, Steve and I, were on a call today with another district who's looking to go with a similar model. And, you know, we are in... We're kind of a rare bird in the sense that not many places are doing with this, this with kids this young. But I also have... I'm part of a couple groups of local districts where there are some interesting things going on. And we do kind of touch base and see if we can borrow and steal the best of what's out there. So thank you for putting that out there.
So I guess two things. I'll reserve this. I want to have a... I have a conversation about the second and third grade, but that's more of a budget. I'll bring that up later in the meeting. But my second thing is the middle school. And so I understand the six blocks from seven blocks, leave aside lunch, why we did that. But I have heard some concerns around the cost of that is there aren't the opportunities to have, say, a counselor break out with a group of students and do a session because you can't... There's really not that breakout, as an example. So I guess my question, it's not the answer, but I just want to make sure at the middle school, we're doing what, you know, we... Kids are basically in school then for that every period. I know they have breaks and they go outside. But making sure that we think about creative opportunities to do things with that missing block, I guess. More those things like the counselors pulling out kids to do, you know, a group stress management session, as an example.
Got it, got it. Well, one bit of nice news, I think, the performing arts folks are starting to do outreach about bringing back the performing groups that we weren't able to work into the schedule. So I know Mike and the team there have been very focused on thinking about what we've lost and how to sort of start to pull it back in. But bands, chorus, and strings are all sort of planning to kind of build programs back in safely. It has to be... It's actually remote, bands, chorus, and strings, but they're going to figure out how to do it, which is pretty cool.
Well, I guess the bigger point is if we're serious about a goal of social, emotional, let's be serious about it and think about, you know, I know it's hard, but like we talked about this, and I'm hearing from people that it's not, you know, like we're jamming in academics, which I understand. But let's be serious about it, is I guess my bigger point.
Yes. No, I hear what you mean about that too. And I actually, our FCL coordinator, Erin Keen, who I think was supposed to present here last spring and got bumped out by the pandemic. Her primary focus right now is on getting some things up and running at the middle school. And so she's... And she's actually... They called me to ask if they could move her physically there for a short period of time. So I think that's good news.
Great, thank you.
I have a question just about the long blocks in the high school, right? So we have the 70-minute, is that right? 70-minute classes?
Yeah.
So that's tough, being on, when you're online for that long. Have the... Has there been discussion, particularly when the kids are in classes that long, and then they have several hours probably after that online for homework? How is that, how is that working out? Or have you had any feedback? It just seemed... I don't know how you get around that difficulty, and maybe there are just some simple things that teachers are doing to break up the class. But I think that's... That could be an issue, particularly as we continue, as we get further into the winter, just sitting for that long in classes and then sitting again for several hours to complete homework in the same manner. I don't, I don't know if there's...
It's interesting. The teachers are doing a lot of... You'll see it kind of in and around the high school. They're breaking the class up, taking kids outside for breaks and things like that. So I think they're being pretty mindful of that. Interestingly, the day that we're hearing the most concern about at the high school is the Wednesday, when kids have the shorter blocks, but they have a whole bunch of them in a row. It's sort of class after class after class. And that's, from what I understand from the high school team, that's where they're trying to puzzle out, is there a better way to sort of do this particular day? To make it... It's the sort of volume of classes, the quick change. It's just a lot, you know? If you imagine seven 40-minute back-to-back Zoom meetings, that's...
That's...
Doesn't sound super fun. So I think the high school is really kind of listening carefully and thinking about what they're hearing from kids.
I have a question for Abigail. Thank you for all your work with one of the toughest groups. Thank you for all your work with one of the toughest groups, getting everybody in and try to do that. And I'm just interested in how that's going with regard to the kids, the special ed kids, and innovative things that are being done, and what have we learned? And then another question is, back when we did our survey, 30% of the families were worried about stress and mental health-related issues, and that was their worry. And is that gone, or is it still an issue? And back a while ago, I thought about trying to be creative at this time, is if we could identify a pediatric group practice that specialties is in mental health, where we could ask them to work with us, where we would ask parents who have issues to email them to our file of Westwood concerns, and then maybe have a Zoom call where they would answer these questions, and parents concerned with these issues could maybe get advice that way. I don't know if that's feasible. I know you and Emily have about 5,000 headaches every day, and you need other things like this. But I do think if it's still an issue out there, we might be able to get some community cooperation. And also just the special ed kids, it's a real challenge. And in relation to that somewhat, it is the, the kids coming in from Boston. How is that working out? Are there issues or difficulties with our kids that are coming to Westwood from some difficult situations?
Sure. So I'd be happy to answer that. And nobody calls me Abigail anymore, Charlie, so that was very.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's lovely. I wanted to just say that in general, what we are finding is that the stress and kind of overarching social, emotional issue is still present. And, and that's not a surprise. You know, I think we're in a long-term situation altogether. And so we are definitely having conversations. We already have two consulting groups that support us with mental health. So I just want to give a shout out to Westwood Youth and Family Services, our local provider, as well as our regional catchment area provider, which would be Riverside Mental Health. And so we are in talks with Riverside currently to, to activate many of the things you're talking about, Charlie, which they're doing for surrounding communities as well, around parent support, community support, and kind of liaisoning between all those different groups. So I would expect that people would hear more about that as we go into, in particular, the winter. I think that's going to be important for everybody. In terms of special ed, we continue to liaison and use the Special Education Parent Advisory Council as our partners, and they're really our official partners, but our real partners in, in thinking through how we get through this together. So we met, you know, this week as a community and really are problem-solving things. And we're really down to logistical schedule questions, meeting questions, paperwork questions, which frankly is kind of the area I'm happy we're back to, because those are the things we know how to do. And we're working through all the specifics of that. I would say that there isn't enough time in the day to do everything we want to do for kids, and that will be our ongoing challenge. And then in terms of Boston students, I do just want to give a shout out to the Westwood Food Pantry. The school system has sponsored and collaborated with the Food Pantry, as you guys know, for a number of projects. And we're doing one right now that is really meant to help kids for whom logistically they may be far away from Westwood for a big part of the week. And parents have been great and kids have been great. So all three of those, those arenas you're asking about are in full effect right now. And I would just say it's a lot of family support and student support at the individual level is kind of what we're working on right now.
Thank you.
I had a couple comments related to grade two and three. Similar to what Maya said about students getting kicked out of the waiting room and not be able to get back in. Hearing of kids that just are getting kind of like lost in the shuffle, whether it's, it's that waiting room piece, or they're not sure kind of where they're supposed to be or what they're supposed to be doing. So those kids that maybe aren't, you know, don't have the initiative to figure it out, just kind of check out a little bit. So it seems like there might be a need for some more instruction, you know, not necessarily from the teachers, but if there's somebody else who could kind of make sure kids are where they need to be and not floundering, I think would be great. And then I, you know, like the other committee members, I think, you know, mental health is a pretty serious concern right now. I love that we have Westwood Youth and Family Services. I think they're phenomenal. My understanding is they're pretty much at capacity right now. So I don't know if there's a way like to partner with the towns to somehow increase their funding so that they can see more students and pick some more kids up, because I feel like we're, you know, as a community, we're so lucky to have them and should kind of maximize utilization if possible.
Yes, thank you. That's helpful feedback. And Allison and I are, I should have mentioned, we're going to be meeting, we have scheduled a series of meetings with grades two and three teachers next week also, so that we can get even more information here. And, you know, we, we're taking some time to make sure that we really understand what the situation is, so that we can then decide, and, you know, what supports do we need to put into place where? So I think we're, we wanted to give time for a few things to kind of shake out, so that we really had a good assessment of where we are. And I think that's been valuable. But that feedback is helpful also. And I should mention that, you know, we are thinking that maybe in a couple of weeks, that we will think of some way to gather more systematic feedback from students about their experience and see how things are going. So I'm just going to, lastly, turn it over to Abby quickly. And then I can share my screen here. Abby's going to talk a little bit about what's been happening with the COVID monitoring and response teams, if you give me one second here.
Great. Okay, so while Emily puts the slides up, I just wanted to say, we're going to talk a little bit more today about response than monitoring. But briefly, here's the monitoring data, which I think is really interesting. So from a student perspective, since 9-14, when the students started, we've had 133 kids who have been supported by the team and have been absent from in-person instruction for some period of time. It's different student by student and case by case. Of the 133 kids, the great news is that 103 of them have already been cleared to return to in-person learning. So that's an important metric, I think, is the, the rate of return and keeping kids in in-person learning and having that option for, you know, personal communication with their teacher restored. We continue to have 30 students who are learning remotely still, based on a COVID-related fact. And we'll get into that in a minute, but there are a variety of factors that might contribute to that being the case for an individual student. And as you know, we've had a single positive student case reported to date since 9-14. In terms of staff, and this is across a variety of staff working groups, not just teachers, right? But if you think broadly about staff, since 8-31, which would be two weeks earlier when the staff first reported, we've had 59 staff who have been supported by the team and have been absent from in-person work. So that doesn't mean that they haven't still been instructing students or supporting students or doing their particular role remotely, but they've been absent from in-person work. And again, that, the length of time will differ person by person, case by case. Of that 59, 39 of those people have already been cleared to return to in-person work and whatever appropriate match that is for their role. So again, that's a really important thing to be aware of when we think about the, the impacts to our staffing capacities. We do continue to have, as of today, 20, and that should say staff, I apologize, staff who continue to work remotely. Now, that doesn't mean that they're not working. It means that they may be working remotely. Not all jobs convert equally to being remote, but that's important. And as you know, we've had two positive staff cases reported. A huge part of the COVID team has turned out to be something that we didn't fully understand at the beginning, but totally makes sense now that we're in it. So the three folks who are the COVID team have consulted with 89 parents or staff since August 31st. And that's really to answer questions and to support them with understanding the protocols. As you know, the DESI protocols have shifted since we've opened. To answer questions about travel, specific to each individual person's travel plan, right? And, and to help people kind of understand and work their way through the, the symptoms list and the screener, and then to work with people around next steps. And those are all unique and individual to each specific person and their situation. So that's 89 parents or staff that have kind of been walked through that process in person, in real time, often through multiple emails and phone calls with a person. So we just want to take a minute and say that, you know, Karen Pareda and Matt Gillis and Paula Lilla are doing amazing work, and their, their work and their investment in that process has made a tremendous impact in the whole success of the district so far. So we thank them very much. I do want to say that the initial idea was that we were thinking like, it would be about people who are positive or negative on a test. And it turns out it's really much more nuanced than that. Really what we're talking about is this monitoring component, and the team really is really thinking through the logistics of travel for individual people. They're helping people while they're waiting for information. They're worried during that period of waiting, and they're really maintaining communication and supporting people during that time. They're helping people sort out this question of, am I a close contact or not? And it's very complicated. You have to really listen and, and follow up with people to understand that enough to be able to help them and answer those questions. They've talked to a lot of parents about sibling-related questions, which, as you can imagine, can get complex really quickly. They've helped people understand the symptom screener, and I did just want to say that we've, we've translated the symptom screener into Mandarin, Arabic, and Spanish, as well as have our, our English copy, and those are all online on the, on the website. And really what they're doing is providing support to people throughout the process, so that they can kind of withstand the stress of the process and participate and give us as much information as they're comfortable with. And that's been very, very helpful to everyone. So I just think, you know, from the early mornings, there's one of those guys on the team that takes the like 5:00 AM shift and checks the emails, to really late at night, you know, there's someone else who stays on to like eight, nine, 10 o'clock checking. To Sundays, we know we get a spike on Mondays. And so we, you know, they've figured out a plan where somebody is always kind of checking Sunday night, late into the evening. But those things really make the response, you know, robust enough that we can kind of sustain ourselves as a district as long as we have. So I just want to thank them and say that is kind of what we're doing right now.
Great. Thank you, Abby. I just wanted to, to sort of follow up with one thing. So again, I think that the team has been doing a fantastic job. And we, I credit Abby with this concept of having this, this team. And it has turned out to be incredibly important for how we're functioning. So, you know, we did have a situation involving Thurston Middle School this week. And so that was the first time that the team really engaged in the contact tracing process in collaboration with our public health director. So that was also sort of a, you know, a big process for us. And so it's, it's one of the first times that we've, in a sense, kind of stress-tested the system. And so, you know, as a result of that contact tracing process, for example, we have nine staff members at Thurston Middle School who have been designated as close contacts and therefore are now quarantining for two weeks. And, you know, luckily, folks are healthy and are able to continue teaching remotely. But from an operational perspective, we then have to kind of backfill and provide substitute, substitutes and supervision for students in the classroom. And so, you know, today was day one of, of trying to, to do that process for the next couple of weeks. And kudos to the middle school people, because they have figured out how to, to make that work at the moment. It really does have, does us, does have us pondering, you know, what would happen if we had this happening in more than one school or with more than one person? And you can see quickly how the operational challenges become a little bit daunting, just the impact of implementing those protocols. But for now, we are in good shape. I appreciate everybody's efforts in that area. Any questions?
Just wanted to thank you and the, the team of people follow work they're doing, just be sure they know how appreciative we are for that. Has there been an issue with them getting access to fast testing? You know, there's 24-hour testing. Is that a problem for anybody, or have we resolved that? Secondly, are we learning or working with other towns and what innovations they've come up with? And thirdly, I know that Department of Public Health has been trying to train people in towns to help people assist the authorities in doing the follow-up contact testing. And so have we been able to draw on the Department of Public Health's advice and help for that contact tracing to have assistance, if, particularly if more cases come up and we need more people involved?
So just very briefly, and I know Emily's quite involved in many of these issues, but I would say thank you for acknowledging how hard they're working, and they really are doing a great job, you know, kind of 24/7. So I think that's important to say. I, I think that the reality of testing for us is that as individual families and staff make decisions with their healthcare providers, there's a variety of responses.
And is there a need to, the problems finding fast testing out there? That we could possibly give them some assistance in, you know, because I've got a lot of feedback from people who it's been a hard time finding, you know, the doctors have a hard time finding somebody who would do it quickly and get them in and not waste a lot of time. And so is that an area we could work on to help the team? And help the physicians trying to get fast testing, or is it not an issue anymore?
So I mean, I, I won't, I, the COVID team advisory team, we did ask that question. We had our first meeting yesterday. And actually, overall, from the experts, the people in the front lines, the doctors, they actually said it's really improved even over the last two months, generally, generally within 24 hours, and then for the rapid tests, it's usually three hours. So it's, that's not an absolute, but their general sense was that actually it's gotten a lot better. There are some other things on testing I'll, I'll reserve to my, the report a little bit later in the meeting. But that, that is, this was the feedback from the, the people in the field.
Yeah. And I would say that the data that we're keeping in our docket, I think, is, is indicating that also. So we can kind of see from the time that somebody notifies us that they're out awaiting a test result, how long until they're cleared. And it's, it's certainly a lot faster a process than we were experiencing, say, in July. So that's some good news there.
I have a quick question relating to the experience at the Thurston. I know it was tricky because things, I think, happened towards the end of the day. So that left a lot of parents kind of in panic mode overnight, right? Because they had to wait for contact tracing to begin the next day. I also recognize, you know, the Board of Health is, is kind of a player in this too, relating to student and teacher private health information. But I'm wondering if there's a way we could, you know, ask people how much information they'd be comfortable sharing kind of about their, their status, you know, what department they work in or whatnot, or per parent, you know, asking if it's okay to share what grade their student is in, so that parents could get a better sense and maybe get a little bit of peace of mind while they're waiting the contact tracing.
Yeah. I mean, it's a very tricky balance, and I, I understand the question. I, I get it. And it's something that we were having ongoing conversations. You know, in each case, we talked to public health about how can we frame this in a way that would maybe give people information that they might need just to create like peace of mind in that moment? Or just to have enough information, because, you know, sometimes people want to make different decisions, sort of use their own judgment about how they want to handle that. So, you know, we do think about that. And, you know, I'm not comfortable talking about sort of all the specific decision-making we made in, in a particular case. But I will say that it's also very important to me that I don't communicate something that I then find out in a process wasn't totally accurate, right? And so, you know, part of what happens in the contact tracing process is that you're figuring out what happened. And so we did in our follow-up, which admittedly was about, you know, noon-ish the next day, try to provide a little more information for. Try to provide a little more information for people. And we do, and I have to say, we've had a very high level of cooperation with people. Folks have been really great, very community minded, you know, and that has been helpful. So I understand the issue and we will keep we'll we'll keep working through that.
One other just quick comment, it'd be great to have these metrics added to our dashboard superintendent, like maybe a weekly, whatever these metrics are that you just shared. Have these added to that dashboard because it'd be helpful to see these weekly or whatever, whatever the right cadences.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. And one of our plans right now, I have to say, I thought I was going to get this done by the end of this week. And then this week has had some unexpected challenges. But hopefully by next week, what we want to do is publish for people like a communication protocol. Because I think it'd be helpful for people to to know, like, in this situation, you will hear from us. In this situation, maybe not the whole district's going to hear, but this, you know, the school would hear here. In this situation, you won't hear from us, just to just so that people know what to expect or not, number one. And then along with that, we thought what we might do is every week, maybe every Friday, publish very high level data. So that people can see, you know, that the kind of statistic that we just shared and it could just be on our website.
That's great.
People have sense of what's happening. Okay, that's it for us.
Okay, Superintendent Report all set, thank you. So we're going to move on now to the liaison reports. Mayor, want to fill us in on the famous building project?
Sure, yeah, we are continuing to move along. We are in schematic design and we previewed the first round of design for the exterior of the building to the school building committee this past Friday. And I think even since then, it's changed based on feedback that they've gotten from the school building committee. So this will be sort of a moving a moving piece for the next few months. The exciting news is that we have a community forum this Tuesday. Where everyone is welcome to come. We will be actually attempting to do a breakout like we used to do when we were in person. To get feedback from anyone who participates. The way we're going to do that is we have a Google form with the images that the architects will go through. And we're going to sort of stop the meeting for about ten minutes and give people a chance to. After hearing the architects present the the various designs that they're looking at, go into that Google form. It will be live at that time, fill it out with their feedback and then submit it within a ten to fifteen minute period. And then so we're trying to get as close to replicating the feedback we used to get with post-it notes where people would walk around the rooms. And stick post-it notes on things. So this is sort of what we're coming up with. We also will have a question and answer session at the ends where people will in the chat can type in their questions. And we'll read off the questions and answer them one by one. So it's we're hoping to have it be very interactive. So we're hoping a lot of residents can join us. It's at seven PM on Tuesday. And, you know, we'd we'd really, this is the first time people are going to see what the outside of this building might look like. So we'd really love to get a lot of people at this.
And to give and to give input.
And to give input, right, exactly.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Moving on, the COVID nineteen advisory group update.
So I don't know, I give that one and then the superintendent can weigh in as well. So we had our first meeting yesterday. We have another meeting, I think, scheduled for a week from Monday. Overall, so we we were able just to context, we were besides several people like Karen and the superintendent and me. We also have now added three community members who have real expertise, really amazing expertise. In the kind of the medical field as well as epidemiology. So that's been a great addition to the team. You know, the first meeting was, we kind of more wanted to broadly cover a little bit of the overall scope and history and kind of where we've how we've gotten to this point. So we did spend a lot of time on that as well as the objectives of the group. I would say just a couple of things, I think, you know, there were probably two things I would take away from me for a first meeting. One was there the metrics, the draft metrics that we shared with this group a few weeks ago. I think they were broadly thought that metrics look very well, thought they were a good set of metrics. I think as well as I think they have all contested as a group is, you know, metrics give metrics or numbers. But there's obviously overall context that you need to weigh in on top of metrics, right? So for example, I think it was North Andover went red according to the state level, but it was mostly because of an outbreak at the university. So they didn't shut the schools because it wasn't really community spread. So that's, I think that was important. So I think they liked the metrics as well as, at the end of the day, they agree that needs needs context and understanding, not just a number. So that was, I think, one good, so I think we we reached alignment there. The second piece and really, I think, where the next meeting will focus on, and I know Charlie, you've been emailing us on. There was a lot of bit of a conversation on testing. And I think there's many, many levels of testing as we've kind of talked about. But I think it includes everything from thinking about what do you do in a situation like happened in earlier the weekend? Thurston, is there a way to quickly do rapid tests as an example? And how do we do that and get that, you know, data quickly to ensure people's safety? There's other things around, I know even more broadly, you know, assurance testing and what that might look like. And and even just disaggregating that, thinking about that between staff and teachers as well as then broader community. So there's a lot of layers to the testing. I think overall, they they really wanted to dive in and I think a lot more on that. So we have some actions, Superintendent and I to kind of, I think, frame up that conversation. And then come back to this group as well as what we think next steps are. Because I know Charlie, you've, thanks for all the work you've done. I think I think the survey, a survey will make sense at some point. I think it's a little bit premature. I think we need to work as a advisor group probably needs another meeting another few weeks. But I think broadly, there was a lot of appetite to understand what are the different layers of complexity and testing? As well as a lot of conversation on how the testing is continuing to evolve. You know, I think we taught the speed seems to have gotten a lot better. The rapid testings are not a hundred percent accurate, but they seem to be getting better. And there's also a lot of things going on with kind of pooling and thinking about that and what that will look like. And I know luckily, we're in an amazing state with the Broad Institute and other places that are really driving a lot of innovation. So I think the testing environment continues to really evolve. It's evolving basically day by day. So I think that was another perspective that they brought to bear. So it was great, I think it was great to get together, great first initial meeting. I think we got a lot accomplished on, you know, these, I think, having a good sense of the metrics. And then I think we're going to dive deeper into the testing over the next few weeks. So and I know you've done a work a lot, we've incorporated some of the stuff that you've done, Charlie. So thank you for all that as well.
So just to be clear, Tony, so on the committee, we have an epidemiologist, right? Who who what other what are?
Maybe try to miss anyone. So we have an epidemiologist, we have children's critical care at Children's. And then what is Mr. Rosen's position?
He's in emergency medicine at Beth Israel.
Plus, we have the we have the school physician as well.
Right, school consulting physician Jared Orsini from the Board of Health, Karen Pareda, our COVID lead, and Tony and me.
Perfect dream.
We have four medical, well, three medical and then one epidemiologist and of course Jared as well.
Great, good. So we're meeting again in about a week, I I think, right? We're meeting again fairly soon.
A week from, yeah, a week from Monday.
I just want to thank you, Tony, and the committee for this work and getting involved in this. And I think it's extremely valuable to get more people involved that understand it. And I I apologize for my somewhat fanatical interest in this issue. Fifty years ago, I was doing a testing, contact testing myself in Malaysia for tuberculosis patients in the Peace Corps. So I kind of had been following that, that I spent fifty years in the field of public health teaching at BU. So I have to hold myself back because of that. I think in addition to the committee we now have, which I think is extremely valuable. We should also take advantage of the work that's being done by the Scientific Advisory Committee in Wellesley. Which has resulted in their school committee deciding definitely want to go ahead and test. And they just completed the five thousand teachers and students in Wellesley. There's about ten or fifteen other towns about to do that. And I think we can learn a lot from them and and answer questions our committee might have from what they have learned and what they've done. I did talk to each of the school committee members about this a while ago with the idea of should we actually ask our parents what they think? Which Wellesley did in August. Emily was kind enough to share with me, Natick just did it recently. And that's a step where you see other parents interested in doing this. And most of the parent surveys have come back with ninety five percent parents saying, do it. And both Wellesley and Natick have asked, are the parents willing to help pay for it? Because the second question is, how do you pay for this? And both parent groups said would be willing to help contribute something, Wellesley to the extent of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think the legitimate questions are, at some time, I'd like your committee to consider, should we get the input from the parents? With and answer their questions. Secondly, begin to explore, did share with Emily, one of the things I believe has happened now is a company called that Ginkgo is supporting. That is teaching, testing all teachers free. And I think they took advantage of that already. They're talking about the cost per test with pool testing, which a company in New York is now doing. Bringing the cost per test down to like ten to fifteen dollars, that's in the future. So there's the cost issue is within our realm. And why even do this in the first place? I think our effort to find the context of the one student that was found to be positive. Is that if you just can remember that forty percent of the kids who are now infected, there's a hundred and seventy one people in Westwood who are COVID positive. Some are sure, are parents of kids. It'll be interesting sometime to find out how many of them are related to the school system. But forty percent of the teachers and forty percent of the kids who are now infected don't know they have it. And they can infect other people. So ultimately, we want to be sure. It's not a bad idea. And at least what I found out from the Wellesley people and the forty different people are involved in their collaborative. Is they think it's an important step to take. So I want to thank you for all you've done. I hope the committee will consider a survey initially. I'll be happy to learn what the people doing it, what they're paying for it now, what the cost might be. So that might help your committee look at it. But I think it's something that needs to be continued on. And if I could be of any help, I'd be very happy to do it.
Yeah, so thank you, Charlie. I'll follow up, I think, so I think overall, the group was very, wanted to really go dive deep on testing. So I think there was well wide alignment among the experts. And I'll also say, I think, you know, I the survey, I think, will make sense at the appropriate time. I think we just need to do a little bit more homework among the committee as well. But so and I'll follow up with you, I think there's a couple of things I'd love to get your input on, maybe offline, but thank you, Charlie.
Great, thank you both. Any other liaison reports? Okay, thank you. Moving on now, we're at our point of public participation. And this is the point when members of the public have opportunity to ask questions or make comments on school or education related topics. You are invited to log into the meeting via Zoom using the credentials. You can go to www.westwood.k12 MA.us/live. I feel like one of those commercials at the end with the quicks, quick language. But anyway, I think folks know how to get in at this point. Please, if you are going to participate, provide us with your name and street address. And John, are you going to handle this for us?
I believe Connor from Westwood Media Center will be.
Connor, you're going to handle this for us today. Fantastic. Connor, do you have people in the queue?
I am looking now, but there is nobody with their hand raised. So again, at the bottom of your screen, up, we have two people right now as I say that. So the first one I'm going to allow to talk is Donna Morrison.
Okay.
Hi, Donna Morrison, three oh three Oak Street. I have two comments or questions. The first one is regarding the school lunches at the elementary level. I'm a little perturbed that a fifth grader has a choice. Of a turkey sandwich or a turkey sandwich, buying a lunch once a week. When the middle school has the option of chicken salad, chef salad, nachos. When I looked at the menu, there were five different types of salad and or a sandwich. So then I looked at the other days that were offered and I saw a ham sandwich that was offered at the elementary. So to the elementary students that are in school for four days, they're offered a ham sandwich or a turkey sandwich. To me, that's pretty poor. I looked at the high school menu, it was the same thing. And I wondered, and I asked the food service department why this was. And they said they were working on it. But to me, that's pretty incongruous. If people are ordering lunches ahead of time online, it seems to me if you can make a salad for a middle schooler to take home. You can make a salad for a high school student to take home or for an elementary student to eat at school. To give them a choice of a ham sandwich or a turkey sandwich every single day, that is very poor. Now, my second point, and maybe this is for the school building forum on the thirteenth. Is the building for the new Hanlon is Lowell Woods. I'm very concerned that the person that endowed Lowell Woods is going to have. Part of that property encroached upon by the cutting down of woods. Meant to be a barrier to the town to have a school building built. That original endowment was meant to not have houses built on it. But now this town seems that it's okay to build a school upon it. So I don't know what your thinking is as far as that property. But I'm a little concerned that when I go through walking through Lowell Woods, that I'm going to come upon. This now big school building. I know that is not what the person that endowed that land to the school had in mind. So I'd like you to keep that in mind as you plan the placement of that building. And before you start clear cutting the land and having to dig through all the ledge that is up there. To provide the proper barrier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donna, appreciate that. And I would strongly encourage you to attend our virtual meeting on Tuesday. And those issues, the one your your issue will certainly be discussed. So we appreciate your your input. Connor, do we have anyone else?
Yep, there is another person just before I unmute them. I just want to remind people who are watching on YouTube or on cable that the instructions to join the Zoom Zoom webinar are at the bottom of the screen. So you can follow those in order to log in. I'm next going to unmute Peter, I apologize, Skyler.
Go ahead, Peter, thank you, Connor.
I live at seven seventy nine Gay Street across from the Hanlon School. Some of you know me. But all of you are going to get to know me as the school project goes on. I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone on the school committee at this meeting tonight. And many and some of you are aware, I am I am a person that has a deep interest in that Shuttleworth property. And, you know, I've lived in town over twenty five years, but the history of that goes back fifty years. And I second the concern that Donna expressed about that land. So many people and previous administrations have worked very hard to protect that property from development. I know that it's, I know that the property is available for use by the town for school purposes. I understand that. But there's just been so much done by the town to try to promote the use and protection of open space that. I'm concerned that by taking this all the way to town meeting. Like was done twenty two years ago, when the the fields and the senior center were proposed for that area. That the risk to this new school is is much, much higher. that the risk to this new school is, is much, much higher with this project. All I wanted to say was, I believe the home run could, could be hit if there was a way to work to put the school there, but to also find some compromise or some cooperation between school committee, select board and the residents to look at how to protect the rest of that land. The precedent that's going to be set by building a school on that property is that the rest of the 24 acres will then be used. It will, it will be clear to everyone that once a school goes on there, once building is, goes on to that property, that, that now a precedent has been set. And the floodgates will open, maybe not this year, next year, five years, 10 years, I'm not sure when. That is my concern. And all I, all I urge you to do is just at least consider a way that we can get the school, but also protect the rest of that property. There is a large group that will oppose this just based on the environmental issues alone, I believe. All we need is one third at the, at the town meeting for that to be problematic. The money that's at risk, the time and effort that everyone has spent on this are all at risk. I'm not saying, I'm not asking for any discussion about it tonight. I'm just asking you to consider it, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, Connor, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yes, I'm going to be unmuting Heather Morrison.
Okay, go ahead, Heather.
Hi, I'm Heather Morrison. I wanted to say that I'm extremely disappointed.
Heather, can you give your address, please?
My address is 74 Magnolia Drive.
Okay.
I'm extremely disappointed about the lack of urgency to get students back in school. There appears to be little progress since September's meeting and with no plan to return to in-person learning. It appears that you're content with the hybrid model. As noted in tonight's presentation, you have seen no COVID spread in schools. The American Academy of Pediatric State, the disruption of learning can have lifetime effects on students' income and their health. The evidence does not support the need for the six feet rule that you have implemented. A study in Sweden has found that teachers are at the same risk of COVID as other professions. There is no evidence of spread in schools. Schools across the United States and the world are opening and prioritizing their children. And Westwood needs to do the same. Pediatricians are overwhelmed with mental health concerns for children, including rises in suicide. I'm also concerned that your focus on testing is misguided. Look at the testing at the White House. They had the best testing in the world and that didn't stop the spread. The spread was because they weren't wearing masks. We're wearing masks here. We have that in place. And I'll end by saying that there are devastating costs to keeping kids out of school. When we have the discussion about sending kids back to school, we have to have it in the context of the massive individual and societal costs of keeping kids at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Connor?
At this time, I see no more hands raised in the participants window.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, and we will move on then from public participation to discussion items. We'll start with the Q1 financial report.
Great, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lynch. I think you're muted, Lincoln.
Good evening, everyone. So in your package, you have the operating budget report for period ending September 30th. I've had discussions with Lima and I'll do the best I can to give you an executive summary after two days on the job. So you'll notice that Lima has provided side by side comparisons. And quite surprisingly, a lot of the comparisons between last year and a normal operating year and this year under the COVID dynamics is quite similar. There's a couple of reasons for that. In summation, the salary line item, the first line you see in that graph, 9.7% expended versus last year, the same percentage. There was an accounting adjustment made so that the ESY salaries were included in the salary line as opposed to other expenses to, to have a more accurate accounting of where the salaries are as opposed to putting these summer salaries for special ed services in an other line, which is interpreted as an operating non-salary line item. So that's an accuracy issue. You'll also, you also may wonder to yourself out loud, where are the, where are the savings reflected from, from the budget cuts? Those, those cuts you'll see over the course of the school year. However, you have to remember that we are only one tenth of the year, one tenth of the way into the school year. And when you compare to other line items, like say, for example, supplies are up. The reason for that is that a lot of the supplies are front loaded in July and August to ready the schools for opening. And that was exacerbated by the COVID supplies and other materials that were necessary. So throughout the document, Lima has provided you with drill down information. A lot of it is most likely familiar to you. I won't get into every little detail unless there's questions. A reminder that there has been a half an elementary position added. There've also been some special education positions added to address very much needed special ed services. As you peruse the memo, you can see district wide cost centers such as central office and curriculum instruction and maintenance is higher than previous years. I think that goes without say with the investments that I've made to open the schools safely. I mentioned the student services increases in the areas of ABA, speech and language pathology. So overall, we're in, we're in very good shape. There is a reminder of the incredible collaboration with the town and their transparency in all our conversations and their willingness to support the schools whenever they possibly can. For example, the 220,000 in technology that they were able to absorb. I would also remind you that there are potential areas where revenue may become available later in the year. For example, FEMA reimbursement or the CARES Act may provide additional relief for the operating budget. And in that case, purchase orders and/or expenses could be shifted to provide a very, to provide a healthier financial picture for the school district. So again, it's earlier in the, early in the school year. We're only one tenth of the way through a very different school year entirely from previous years. But, but overall, I would say that we're in good shape. And we're in a position to absorb potential revenue losses in food service, bus fees, building use, et cetera, with the savings that, that you'll be able to, to witness at each quarter, quarterly report. They'll become more evident. So I would entertain any questions and do the best I can to answer them.
Well, it's not, it's, I guess I reserved, it's not so much a question. It's more, it's, it's more of a reflection on what we've heard, some of the, I think, better news fiscally. I'd like to reiterate what I said at last meeting. I know you're working on this, but to me, second and third grade investments there are really important. And I don't know what that looks like. I know you're still doing some diagnostic, but you have my full support on thinking creatively about what additional support we need for those grades. And just, and I'd also encourage you to think about other ways to maybe not bring back four days, but other ways to think about something like a three day model as well. So I just, that's, that's not so much around the, I think, you know, updating the budget. But that's just something I think, for me at least, is a prior down or my colleagues fair, but that's me.
I agree. I think it's clear that second and third grades are struggling. So to the extent we're putting resources somewhere, I think that should be the primary focus. And I, I also think that, you know, the, the budget looks, looks good. I think that, which is great, but we should be cautious about that because we don't know what lies ahead. But at the same time, we clearly have an issue. And if we need resources to address the issue, then I think we need to allocate them there.
Thank you.
I agree. Thanks. I mean, I'm, I'm in full agreement that that's our priority, where we would put our resources. I think that I'm glad that we've taken a little time because I have to say what I thought I was going to recommend two weeks ago isn't what I would recommend today. And so, you know, we've had a lot of conversations. I don't want to make a, you know, a $200,000 decision and have it not be the, the right intervention. So we are, but, but I agree. And so that's, that's what we'll be thinking about over the next couple of weeks.
Is your sense, Emily, that in a couple of weeks, you might have a recommendation to share?
Yeah.
We waited for second and third grade, that's great.
Okay, thank you, Lincoln, and welcome to, welcome again to the team.
Great to be here. Excellent community.
We give you a break the first meeting, next time you get tougher questions.
I'm ready for it. After 12 years as superintendent, this is a walk in the park.
I bet.
Okay, so we'll move on then to the superintendent's goals.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen in one second.
Before you start, Emily, can I ask a question? Are there district goals that these could derive from?
Well, I asked, so that's one of my talking points. We do not. So, well, let me slightly amend that. So as you know, we have a strategy for district improvement. And the current timeframe goes, it was a three year plan. It goes out to 2021. And what we have done in the first two years is that though the overarching goals remain, the, the focus areas and priorities from year to year have changed. Truthfully, we have not had time as an administrative council yet to do the process that we do to articulate those priorities. And so what we really need is, we need a little time to retreat, to have that, that strategic conversation. And we're hoping to make that happen soon. Having said that, I think it's pretty clear that this year is, is different. And that, that high level strategic work is going to be hard while we're trying to honestly just kind of get through this year as effectively as we can. So, but we are going to be thinking about that. So what I tried to do is shape my goals sort of with the, the unique parameters of this, this year in mind. I think you will see that even within that, you'll see themes that are related to that district priority document coming through. So just to remind you that as a superintendent, each year I articulate a professional practice goal, a student learning goal, and then two district improvement goals. And so I provided these for you in the packet, but I'll just say it a couple of words. And so as I was thinking about my professional practice goal, I think that what I need to focus on is providing the necessary leadership support to successfully navigate the challenges of providing a high quality experience during the pandemic and also to get ready for FY22, which I think is going to be challenging in different ways. And as I think about that, I'm really thinking about it in terms of sort of three areas. And so obviously, teaching and learning is the first area. And so I'm thinking about how I can best monitor the implementation of the fall reopening plan and really stay on top of the teaching and learning landscape. There's also the health piece. And so that has to do with continuing to oversee the health and safety of the school community. And I said here, including transparent communication with families. I would say that early into the year, it's clear to me that that kind of, that kind of transparent communication is going to be critically important for us. And then in collaboration with the school committee and the district leadership team and our town partners to closely monitor this year's budget, which I think will be clearly very different, and, and develop a proposed FY22 budget that considers the uncertainty of the educational terrain. So I think that developing the FY22 budget is going to be a challenge this year because it's hard to know exactly what we're budgeting for. We may have to think about different contingencies. So that is what I'm thinking about in terms of professional practice. The student learning goal that I've articulated is around some core skills in ELA and math and focusing on enhancing those skills, you know, making sure that students are continuing to grow in these very important areas by engaging in just in time review of prerequisites as well as other strategies to help them access grade level content and standards. Specifically, what I'm thinking about here is, you know, as a district, how do we assess students' current skill levels, given the disruption of last spring? And, and then continue to assess their progress around key learning benchmarks. And so we've started to have some very preliminary discussions about that. We know we need to do some things around some, some formative assessment here at the beginning. And that assessment might look different in the model that we're in right now. So we want to be thinking about those things. Obviously, we've been thinking a lot about our students with special needs. And so we want to think about how to support them. We know that we, we need to think about how to implement services going forward. And also, we have a significant process to engage in around kind of looking back at what happened last spring and thinking about compensatory services and to be planning for how we're going to engage in that going forward. Related to all of this has to do with ongoing professional development to support teachers to be effective in different models. And then, of course, you know, I never want to lose sight of some of these important strategic priorities we have about supporting students' academic growth by focusing on SEL, culturally responsive teaching, and examining district practices with an equity lens. I feel like those are areas that we have been doing some good work. And even in this very different year, I want to make sure that we hold on to those really important things and, and continue to move them forward. And as we're managing day to day things, it's sometimes hard to hold on to those very important big picture things. So we'll focus on, on that. And then both of the district improvement goals are related to the building project. And I think this is going to be an important year in terms of community engagement as we lead up to the vote at Springtown Meeting. And so that's an area that I want to continue to focus my efforts. And related to that, we, at the end of August, were voted into the schematic design phase with MSBA. And so that has a different set of deliverables. And clearly, that is a significant piece of work that's unique to the demands of this year. And so I will be focusing on that as well. So I'm obviously happy to answer any questions.
Emily, I just have a question. Thank you again for this every year. It's a very comprehensive design you have. The state is going back and forth on whether they have MCAS this year. And there's pressure on them. And how would that affect, once they decide, I assume they're going to decide soon, how would that affect how we organize things? Would we have to change things? It seems like it's, it could, could cause a change in how we deal with certain grades and what our instruction would be.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, Charlie. I have to say, well, so, I mean, it, it wouldn't change things structurally in the sense that we have grade level standards and we're working within those curriculum frameworks. And, and frankly, we, you know, we're, we're working to have kids grow and learn and meet those standards, whether there's an MCAS or not, right? So, you know, that's just kind of the work of the district. I guess where I went to when you asked that question was like, logistically, what does that look like? You know, if we were still in a hybrid environment, how do we handle MCAS? And I have to say, I have not contemplated that yet. So I think we need to stay tuned and see where the state, where the state goes with this.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Although I think they're good. I guess, oh, I think they're good. I'd like to see a little more detail on the last bullet. More, well, I want to understand a little bit more of the specific actions on the last bullet under your professional practice goal, number two, around social, emotional, and kind of the equity piece. Because I just want to make sure we don't, and I, we can't do everything, I know. But what would that look like? Would that mean more, would that be additional parent educational sessions like we had last year? Would that be other specific things, programs you're thinking about? I just want to, I'd like, be helpful to understand a little bit more. What are the, you know, one or two things we want to deliver there if we don't lose track of, of those important goals?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And I mean, I, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to piggyback on that. And I think one of the things we had talked about was sort of reviewing the curriculum and really trying to understand how, you know, the, the curriculum that we're teaching and, and maybe different perspectives in, in that curriculum that we could add. So I'd like to see if I can something specific around that as well.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, it's all of those things, I think, right? Curriculum, parent programming, professional development, student programming. And I think that once the leadership team for the district has a chance to do some of that planning work that we weren't able to do, then we'll get very specific. I have ideas about that, but obviously, we want to have that conversation as a group. And I think those would be fantastic conversations to have at school committee as well. I think one of the things that we realized last year is that maybe we, a, a missing piece is to make sure that we're keeping what we're doing as part of the public discourse also. So I would love to talk about these things at school committee.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
All right. If there aren't any further questions, we're going to move on to the action items. The first is the approval of the September 17th, 2020 meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All right. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Okay, so all in favor, Tony?
Yes.
Maia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes. That motion carries. We've approved those minutes. Let's move on to the next, which is voting to accept a grant. Always nice to accept money. Voting to accept the grant of 30,000 from the, from the Foundation for Westwood Education. Emily, did you want to say anything about that?
I think Allison's going to say a word about that.
Okay, Allison, you're on.
Yes, thank you. So I, I think I might have mentioned this last, last time, but we feel very fortunate for this. This is a targeted grant, really looking at things that the foundation thought would be helpful to A, support teaching and learning the hybrid, and that's the district wide subscription to Nearpod, which is sort of a, an online teaching tool and that can be used across multiple content areas, multiple age groups. But kind of, I think more responsibly to some of the questions from the committee tonight is investment in some resources related to social emotional learning. So this grant, in combination with some district resources as well, has helped us to purchase two major things. One, our materials for elementary teachers to support responsive classroom implementation of some, some of the responsive classroom learning that we've started, particularly around morning meetings and closing circles and some sort of activators, things that are things you can do as breaks during the day. In addition, it's purchased an entire online S E L curriculum resource for the middle school. And I had mentioned Erin Kuhn, the coordinator, is going to be spending some time at the middle school. Part of what she's doing is working with the admin team there and some teacher advisors to kind of do the rollout of these kind of curriculum resources during some of that kind of, as Tony mentioned, that advisory time got parceled out a little bit. They're looking at ways of reorganizing it to make kind of a more programmatic and more systemic approach. I just also want to throw in something that we are going to do at the district level to kind of partner with this. We just today actually have purchased an assessment tool for S E L that's K to 12 to allow us to do some more robust data gathering. Part of the thinking behind that is that the, we don't have the data from the vocal survey last year because there was no MCAS, which was a helpful data source in terms of, you know, how are students doing? What did they think about school? What is, what was their feeling about the school climate and community? So we're investing in a resource that will help us sort of look at that this year. And we're looking at that as at least a three to five year sort of investment so that we can continue to track our efforts over time. So thank you to the foundation.
Thank you.
Thanks very much to the foundation for supporting that work. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. All right. So we need to take a vote to accept the money, people. All right, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Charlie?
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion on this grant?
Just a very nice thank you letter to them for all they've done. And maybe a follow up after we buy these things to tell them about what we've done with their money.
Okay, can we get a vote then? Charlie?
Yes.
Maia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That motion carries. And again, thank you to the Foundation for Westwood Education. Moving on, vote to accept another gift, a gift of 20,000 for the Donna M. Saul Annual Spirit Scholarship Fund. Emily, do you want to talk for a second about that?
Yes, we're, we're feeling very fortunate that we have had, we've been approached by an anonymous donor to establish a new scholarship for our graduating seniors that is in honor of the memory of Donna Saul, who was an alum of Westwood High School. And it is an initial gift of $20,000 to sort of create like an endowment for the scholarship. And it would be awarded yearly to a senior class cheerleader or other senior class student who is considered to have the most school spirit. So this is a really exciting addition to our, our scholarships at graduation, and we're very appreciative.
Right. That's great. Thank you. All right. So how about a motion to accept this gift of 20,000 for this scholarship fund? Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All right, so Maia?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I am a yes. That carries, that motion carries. Thank you to the anonymous donor for that gift. And we're moving on now. The vote to update the school building committee membership. Maia, you want to just speak briefly about that?
Sure. So Kate Scales has resigned as a member of the school building committee. And on behalf of the school building committee, I want to thank her for her contributions to the elementary school project. She was a great asset to the community, I mean, to the committee and the community. But what we need to do now is, is appoint a community member as her replacement. And I'm actually recommending replacing her with two community members. The first one is Mary Kate Ferreira. She is a former kindergarten teacher and a current reading and specialist and tutor. She and her family have been in Westwood since 2006, and she has children at the Hanlon and at Thurston. She served as president of the Westwood Young Women's Club and of the Hanlon School P T O. The second one is Jen Flanders. She is a professional engineer in the field of structural engineering, designing, and assisting in the construction of educational, commercial, and residential buildings. So a very own topic. Her family moved to Westwood recently in 2018, and she has two young daughters that will actually attend the new Hanlon School in upcoming years. And she is a member of the Westwood Young Women's Club. So I think each of them bring a wealth of insight and knowledge in different areas that will be greatly beneficial to the S B C, and I highly recommend their appointments to the S B C.
Okay, thanks, Maia. And I echo your thank you to Kate Scales for her, for her work, and we will vote at this time. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on these, bringing in these two new members? No further discussion, so let's take a vote. Maia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda? Tony?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a yes. So welcome to those two new members.
Girl, I don't think Amanda voted.
I was having issues, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. I knew you were, I knew you were a yes. I could see it in your face.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that motion carries. Moving on to vote, we need to vote to ratify the Westwood Cafeteria employees memorandum of agreement.
Yes, so I'll just say a quick word about it. You have a copy of the M O A. So it's, it's really related to two things. So as you know, one of the impacts of COVID is that we had to lay off a little more than half of our food service workers. And so the M O A really is just clarifying and extending by six months their recall rights in the event that we're able to return people to work, that they would have the right of, of recall to those positions. And it's clarifying how we would go about paying out their accrued benefits and also what would happen if they were subsequently recalled. So that's laid out here. And then the other issue is that some of the folks that we are able to continue to employ actually experienced a reduction in their hours at the same time that we have some additional cleaning duties that we need some people to take on around cleaning and disinfecting furniture, countertops, railings, door handles, sort of those high touch areas that we want to have cleaned. And, but those duties cross over into another one of our bargaining units, the custodial unit. And so we're kind of clarifying how they would be able to accomplish those duties, pay rates, and whatnot with respect to their contract. So I think it's pretty straightforward, and we're, we're happy that we're able to have some folks take on some of these responsibilities. It's going to be very helpful for us. And also, we're happy we can keep people employed.
Absolutely. Okay, great. So let's get, let's take a vote to ratify this M O A. Can I get a motion? Oh, that was quick. Charlie was quick on the trigger. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none. Maia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, Tony?
Yes.
Okay, and I am a yes. Okay, so we're good on the M O A, on that M O A. We got to vote in, we got to vote on another M O A. So this is to ratify the S E I U local number 888, the Custodians and Maintenance Personnel Memorandum of Agreement. Do you want to speak briefly on this too, Emily?
Yeah, they're just sort of two, two straightforward issues in this M O A. Again, this is related to the pandemic and issues that have come up. So first is, is an issue related to what I just spoke about. And so basically, this is codifying that this unit is agreeing to allow the members of the other unit to do things that are traditionally part of their job responsibilities. And then similarly, sort of retrospectively, we, we were able to work with REC over the summer, and they use Martha Jones for the program there. Our operations people were very busy with school reopening, and so we were not able to support REC operationally. They brought in contractors to do the cleaning. And so this is just sort of codifying that we made an exception and that they agreed very nicely to that exception for the summer so that we could run the REC program at Martha Jones.
Okay, great. Thank you. So let's take a vote, people. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this particular M O A? Seeing none? Let's take a vote. Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Maia?
Yes.
And I am a yes. It is unanimous. We, we now have that M O A ratified. Okay, new business, people. Anyone? Okay, moving on to, how about adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Really? I didn't even ask. I, I don't know, Maia. It's only quarter to nine.
I know, I know. It's early.
This is a short meeting for us tonight. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm, I'm pretty sure no one really wants to discuss adjournments. So let's just, let's just vote it. Maia?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
I'm waiting for the day when someone says nay. I, I don't know. I don't know if that ever happens. But I will say aye as well. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.